For any of those attend- attendance in the meeting, I just wanted to allow you all to understand why there is delay. We have two board members present and we are waiting for it warm in the room. We do have some other board members on the way. We are hoping they arrive soon. Thank you.
All right.
Finally.
Yes, initially, we have to do pledge allegiance.
Yeah. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic where which stands, one nation, under the common indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of agenda.
There's a roll call on there.
Yeah, roll call.
Oh, roll call today.
Uh, member Todd. Here, uh, member McKay. Here, uh, member Duarte, let the record show she is absent today. Uh, Secretary Sutton. Also let the record reflect her absence. Uh, Vice Chair Threckle.
Here.
Sherman Griffiths.
Yeah.
Uh, liaison Seaman.
Yeah.
Liaison Thornbro.
Here.
And then presenting staff today, we have General Manager Nicholas Schneider and Operations Manager Adam.
Did you do prior?
I was here.
Name that one.
No, that's not related.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
You changed your name, huh? If only it was that easy.
Yeah. I still have to pay her bills.
Public forum. Anyone like to address the committee seeing no one?
Yeah, do we?
We gotta do adoption of agenda, I think.
Oh, yeah, you're correct.
Yeah.
Yes. Would someone like to move to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second. It's moved in second to adopt the agenda as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Approval of minutes. Over seventeen.
Oh, we have to go back to the public forum. We have to make sure that we give everybody a chance. So who is open the public forum back up for one minute?
Okay.
Nobody is. Would you like to address the committee, Mr. Paul?
No, I was just saying I had nothing.
Okay, thank you. Well, seeing no other public comment, we can move now to the approval of the minutes.
Need a motion to approve your minutes or is you ready? Someone has an objection.
I have a motion.
I made a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Moving second to approve the minutes of October seventeenth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Informational reports.
Yeah. Good. Uh, so, yeah, so quickly, um, this is the, the first page is from the, uh, the board meeting, November board meeting. The shows are stuffy is, uh, starting to level off, the irrigation season ended, so we started seeing that to rebound. For precipitation outlook, uh, looks like, uh, equal chances, uh, for the next couple of months and then a little bit warmer than the normal is what, what's the prediction is. Pretty straightforward.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any comments? Yes.
Now, the floor we're going right down over here. This top, well, I mean, that thing was down like four inches and now it's up to the top. So that means we got a good underwater ground groundwater.
Okay.
Everything's full.
Yes.
A question, where do we get our official rainfall data from?
Do you do it from, uh, uh, sweetwater treatment land?
Okay, and that's.
And cool and enduresome?
Okay, and eh, how is that calculated?
Weather station.
Weather station, good.
Is recorded daily?
That's fine. My, uh, years ago, I was told you use the NOAA data from Auburn.
Uh, for like the numbers on the back information sheet, those are granted from, from us.
Good.
Yes.
Now, normally cool doesn't get as much rain as we get up here in there.
That is correct.
So they gotta average it out, right? And, uh, but the other night, four nights ago or three nights ago, there was a downpour in, in Garden Valley that you can see from here and we didn't get anything. It's like, and they got down.
Isn't that weird though?
That's.
So I think you can have.
Yeah, cuz I have a Davis weather station and said we got one one hundred so in the last twenty-four hours. Yeah.
I measured seven inches of an inch.
Yeah.
Action items review of current and future water seasons.
I don't have anything to discuss for this at
Okay.
current moment. This is a standing item that we leave here just to keep open in case any of the committee members or the public would like to comment on the timing of this water season or future water seasons. So as of right now, I don't have anything to say. Please.
Our water season is the five months.
Correct.
And it's from the first of a month to the last of another month.
Uh, not generally, but it can, it can be, uh, that could be adjusted as well.
And must that be adjusted on an annual basis?
They had, it's, it's adjusted in April once we determine our water year. So the board uh, votes on what kind of water year we have.
Yeah.
Excuse me, that is typically what that is determined.
Okay, well, I know it can be shortened because of water supplies. Can it be elongated? My question is, I, I seem to recall a lot of complaints of past year about pushing it from May first to June first today. And I'm wondering if a May fifteenth date could be chosen to the end of October, sort of mitigate some of that. It can?
The board can do whatever they want. Well.
Well, I know billing is gonna come in.
That, that does, that does cost more money at that point because if you elongate it, then you, you either pay, you gotta pay more.
Right.
So we may hear about that.
As well.
Uh, but yes, we, we could theoretically go May fifteenth to, to October fifteenth or something like that. But yes, the board can. They set the policy. So if they wanna set a six month, they can set a six month.
Okay.
That is just something that has to be taken into account with the customers, or they will be billed through the additional.
Okay.
One of the things that we discussed is instead of shifting it thirty days like we did, we could have shifted it two weeks.
Right.
So that's, you know, that's an option as well.
Okay. Well, um, so, so the rates are set on the five month interval?
Correct.
If we made it a six month interval, would that affect rates at all?
Set per, per allocation. It's set per allocation.
Per allocation. So it would, it would be, you would still pay the extra one fifty-eight or whatever it is for another month.
Yeah, I think the rates are based on a month for five.
It's like if you look at the forms, it's seventy-seven, like for a half inch, it's seventy-seven dollars per month. So if we went to six months, you would be paying seventy-seven dollars for that addition.
I was just curious if that had been set up, if the rate had been set up before the five month period. And I know that you can't bill for the costs and blah, 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 blah.
Fifty figures are off. Plus seventy-seven a month.
That's where I happen.
Oh. Okay.
One inch or more, hundred fifty-four, twenty.
We do have a hand raised, Chairman of Mr. Ray Paul.
Oh, Mr. Paul.
Yeah, so there was a discussion last year. You know, the extension was great going into October, but starting earlier would have been really nice. And the discussion was we had to have state approval or some Water Resource Board approval to go more than those dates from June one to October. I think that, you know, May one, May fifteenth to October like it was this year would benefit a lot better, you know, the cost is the cost. So, uh, that's just my input. I would like to see it start either May one or May fifteen like it used to and extend into October. They had to get some permission, state or somebody to run it that long. Uh, obviously based upon availability of water, I get that.
The, the, the five month time period is based upon our urban water management plan.
Yeah.
So, so we allocate a certain amount of water in our urban water management plan toward this service. With the abundance of water that we had in the system, we probably could have opened up a sixth month and not had any effect on our allocation. We decided to just shift. And the reason for the shift, to reiterate when this all happened originally, was not because of the season, there was still work being completed that was being finished from the fire. We had erosion, we had fire damage in the system and we had to do work. We just physically could not perform the service until June first.
And the snow.
But that, that's, that basically that's not, with, with the snow, the erosion, the fire, it all culminated in this need to shift. Could we have done May fifteenth? In hindsight, we probably could have made the May fifteenth date. But we were very conservative and we went with the June first date because there was so much water in the system.
Are we gonna, are we gonna look at that?
I'm just saying, you know, starting, starting back where we used to start and, and going to October is a good benefit just because of you're in fire season. It's nice to have that available.
Yeah, no, I thought we totally understand. And, and so May fifteenth, October fifteenth, if the, if the board, uh, you know, if, if that's their will, then that's their will and that's, that's completely up to them. And to answer your question, it is addressed every year at the April board meeting.
That's good cuz you can look at your season or if, if we're wet, it's like ways to water.
Yeah, so if we're going before April, then there has been times where it's been really wet and it just stops. And we have to be really careful to avoid those types of situations.
And the committee made a recommendation to the board last year. So the committee is also an active participant in this decision.
We will, they'll do it again later.
Yeah. Okay. Annual custom customer communications and forums.
So this has been brought up a few times and at the moment I'd like to open up this for committee discussion. This was gonna, I, I'd like to make it your time because this is something that many of the committee members has taken interest in as well as the board liaisons. So in front of us, in front of you, you have the forums that we submit. Uh, we can go over them together if any potential, uh, adjustments, updates, changes, you know, there are certain things that we may have to say that's, you know, an operational type thing that we do, so we can't change that. We can, if you can adjust it, we can, we can maybe, uh, uh, use different formatting. But like, let's open it up and, and just have a, a good, healthy discussion about this. And that's the goal with these forums. So looks like the first one is the seasonal irrigation service application.
Okay, I.
Just, oh, please, please, yes, please.
Yeah, so we, um, so in effort to, because we have discussed, we had discussions about the form before, so we kind of took our form. Um, what we need to be on there and put it in the format that was kind of suggest the, the layout, I guess. Um, and there's two, there's two here to the app, there's two forms, one's the application, one's a notice. Application is for, I mean, our customers that were a customer the previous year. Um, the notice, the first part of the, the pink page is the notice to let customers who have been inactive that, um, this is available and then if they are interested, the secondary tax will application. Or that's just for the application for, and if we get the cross connection after. Add a little bit to it.
We're on vibrating.
Uh, well, I have a comment.
Please.
Um, I would like to take, um, the first, so when you get into the small print, I like to get rid of the first line for irrigation service generally runs between May to October. Um, and then start off.
That's, that's the same.
But as we go farther down, specific start, if you read the next line, it says specific start end dates are determined and announced in April each year based on the water availability among other factors. Operating dates may be also adjusted at any time during the season. I would say add in your May to October somewhere in that line and get rid of that first line because you're kinda saying the same thing over. And make it all, this is, this is what we're talking about. It's not a second bullet point. It's the same bullet point. Um, and then on the third bullet point, irrigation allotments are required to be used continuously. And I would like to add twenty-four hours per day. So I was trying to say twenty-four seven, but then am I confusing somebody? So maybe just say once you start it, twenty-four hours a day, that thing has to run. Am I getting my head in?
I'm trying to figure out where you're looking at.
Yeah, the third bullet, bullet on the left hand side. So can I use?
I mean, it's semantics, I think. So whatever you wanna put.
Um, and then I wanted to kill the shading in this bottom box because you have for office use only shaded, but then you want them to sign it in a shaded box that you over here said for office use only.
So that box is actually gonna have their address. I'm not sure where it has office use only. I was gonna say their addresses.
I can only go by what.
Yeah, so you were, that's where we, that's where we address the letters. Um, I mean, those changes, the, the reason we put the generally is so that people can understand that's what it says in the ordinance.
Right.
Well, just instead of, you know, October comma, then but, but specific start end dates are determined and announced. Oh, she said continue it from one bullet point.
Yeah, it's one bullet point. It's not two bullet points. It's the same, you're, you're making the same discussion.
That's six one.
And like I said, I just was trying to figure out a way to make them understand if they read this, that, uh, continuously means twenty-four hours a day. Not at your convenience, not hot weather, cold weather, et cetera.
I think there needs to be.
I'm just saying. We just, I mean, if everything hydra is hydrated and we don't need any more water on the land, what are we supposed to do with water? I have to put it somewhere because I have to run it twenty-four seven.
Well.
That's what I'm required to do.
If you're, if that's the case, maybe you're taking too much water.
I got two choices. Half inch or an inch. I don't think, I think I would use more than half an inch to irrigate.
Grow a bigger garden.
We're, we're putting the greenhouse in as we speak.
There you go. Problem solved.
Yeah.
Or get more cats. They drink water.
Buy some cows and drink a lot of water.
Yeah, build a pond. We have a koi pond that we have, that we do not fill. Yes.
Yeah, see, I run all my extra, like, when we get October, it was going right into pond. That's all I was doing was just filling my pond because I had nowhere for it to really go.
We fill the creek, but as soon as everybody starts watering, the water comes down through the aquifer and the creek gets full anyways. Great.
If I'm incorrect or incorrect, I believe the reason for continuous use that based upon the system, the way it was designed, the ditches will overflow. That's what was told last year.
That's right. It's for the, it's for keeping, you know, the overflow, the erosion, when it does overflow into personal property. Um, that's why, you know, these guys can't go out and because I've shut my water off, they, you know, they gotta adjust the water flow again. So that's why they say they set it up, run it a certain, so many gallons. Another pond in.
Just trying to explain to the lady why she wants to have continuous use. That's all. I understand the system.
Thank you.
Yeah, my neighbors are happy when it flows down the creek to fills the ponds.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment on this application thing?
Please.
Um, I think there needs to be some reference to the ordinance on there. Uh, there, there's no reference to the ordinance.
Right, that's true.
By signing, I am.
It, it does, it says in the coordinates with.
With ordinance. Well, I think it needs to be spelled out that it's a specific irrigation ordinance.
Yeah, well, that's the number for it. That's ordinance twenty, that is the irrigation. We could put the word irrigation.
Who knows that? Well, maybe just, maybe just put the or, put, put a piece of, you know, the paper that has the ordinance on it and underline it. Send to them, I mean.
Do what? All new customers are getting the ordinance this year too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If all the customers get a piece of the ordinance.
Yeah, well, well, we can add the word irrigation. I think that's easy. They're gonna all get a copy of the new ordinance in with this application.
All of them are just the new ones.
Everybody.
Cuz I, I just don't think people understand what it does to the system.
I don't think people, a lot of people don't either don't know that it exists or definitely have not read it.
Right.
The ordinance.
Cuz it, it, it really messes up chariots ditch when somebody shuts off their water. And then they decide they're gonna turn it back on again and then.
Mind your, nothing.
Yeah. Please.
Didn't we discuss this last month and Donna stressed heavily to send something out with the applications with a highlight twenty-four hours a day. You've gotta keep it running.
Yeah, we, we had originally talked, said that, um, that you guys were gonna come back with that uh, insert to it. Uh, so this would go out with an insert or you were going to have a video done. Or something would be done by this meeting so we could review it and send it to the board for approval.
So.
We have a flyer. We did the video.
The videos are, we did the videos? Okay, so, so I personally, we're not gonna review, review those today, but there are videos that we decided to do. They're gonna put them on the YouTube channel.
Cuz I believe that has to go to the board.
Really? I mean, we can send, we can show you what we're gonna do, but it doesn't really have to be approved by the board.
To do, to make a video of what?
Uh, how to, how to basically operate your irrigation system. We're showing them, giving some like do's and don'ts and.
That's your opinion.
Which is the law.
That's your opinion.
It, it, it.
Remember.
Well, in fact, it has to go, you, you're still, what you're saying is your opinion.
That's true, but I think, you know, one of the things is what happens, like, what happens when you're not running your water twenty-four seven? And you show that ditch overflowing and going into somebody's property. Those are the kind of things that are, um, user, you know, the user finally go, oh, maybe I care. Well, probably not, but hopefully they care that they're putting an effect on this whole system, not just, oh, I don't have a big place to put my water. Something, yeah, some, some little.
We have, so we were putting this flyer together. This is the full page. When we get to the side, that's good. That was gonna be a flyer that goes out. We could, when we get to that, we could, we could add. We're gonna have the link in there to the website and those videos to, we can, we can add in here, you know, the continuous, like any bullet points, you know, we wanna add to it. This was your guys' idea also to have like the allocation. You know, what's available, potentially available.
Right, right.
Areas. We could add it to that last, that's gonna be like a postcard flyer. Add to that.
Big, big, big print, not little print.
Of course, I have a hard time.
We can only do the princess size allows.
I have a hard time figuring out why they have to shut it off because if you're taking the right amount of water, you know, I mean, you're you're usually with me, what I take, I'm like a half a day behind. You know, which is great. If it dries out a little bit, ain't gonna hurt it.
Yeah.
But if you're soaked, if your, your ground soaked and you can't take anymore, well, maybe you need to cut the amount of water.
And, and if people want to adjust the amount that they're getting, we can come out and help. I mean, we can't be out there all the time, but there has been people who have called and say, hey, can you shut us off? Cuz we need to do some work.
Right, if you broke, broke a back or something.
Yeah, and, and so that's, that is reasonable. I mean, we, we do have, if it's becomes excessive, I mean, there's going to be service calls and stuff like that, but we would be more than willing to work with the customer.
Yeah.
And then the one, only other thing is irrigation's on that, a little fine print on this thing. Uh, are billed bimonthly in advance. As what we found like this year, they weren't billed bimonthly in advance. So do we really need to have that on that?
Well, the only, I mean.
If we adjust the, the schedule, even it's due that statement up.
It, it only screwed it up because of the change in the fiscal year timing.
Right.
Yeah.
I get it, but I'm just saying if we, why do we need it in there at all? One, it's A, it's in the ordinance.
Because if people get a bill and it's in advance, they're, we at least wanna say it's on the application you signed. We don't wanna be like, oh, my gosh, why are we getting billed two, two ones in advance? Because it's here on the, on the bill, on the, on the application, excuse me.
Anyway, if we have it, it's a normal time. If we adjust it, then it will.
Right, there's a ton, there's a lot of hypotheticals.
Right, but I'm just saying instead of having it actually, or say maybe billed in advance. Or I don't know, but, but clearly that statement came up in one of the, the, um, meetings that we had about well, we're not being billed in advance. We're being billed after a month. So I'm just trying to get rid of this, the catch words that we don't need in that.
Yeah, I, I think that's the value of making that one out because theoretically, we're going to try to continue to do it how we always have done it with the billing. And I don't want anybody to think that, I want people to. For those people who have done this, they admit, they know that the bill could come in advance. For those people who are potential new customers, we want them to understand that this bill could come in advance. This year, we just kind of a little bit of a fluke year where we changed the, I mean, it's mine, it's my phone. But I, I, I'm not sure it's a great idea to remove that language.
Yeah, I don't think it's a big deal about the language anyway, anyway, cuz everybody knows you gotta pay for it. You know, what the hell?
Be right there.
You're waiting to get the shock, you know?
Okay, any other for this page? There are none. We get those couple changes. The next one is a, is a pink queued page. So, um, this is for returning customers that we, correct?
Inactive.
Inactive, inactive but potentially returning.
Yes, right.
Yeah, so the first one was for those who are active customers and returning. This is for inactive and returning. So that's why we send them as different colors so that the staff can see them when they come back.
Well, could it say new, say what it, it's, it is?
No.
I agree with the colors.
It's only, it's only for staff.
It's pretty good, the first sentence in the.
I don't care about the color. I'm just saying to add the word new or return or.
But we don't wanna have a whole bunch of added work. Or we just print it on different colored paper. It's the same language, all the same language, except for this box right here.
Well, yeah, this has.
It's also for additional?
I mean, yes.
Where do you work for down for addition?
So on the, on the, on the first page, you'll see it says, down by the address box, it says renew, renewal change request to, from to, that's inches. And then it says, we know no changes in the first application. Second application is basically this, uh, inch is requested and it has a has it called to the notice and then it has a quick description saying district records, any from the received irrigation service that's no longer active. If interest renewing service for the twenty-four season, you know, complete the application below.
Is there any place anywhere that indicates what number of inches you can? Is there any place anywhere that indicates what number of inches you can request?
That was the idea behind the flyer. It wasn't gonna be on the application, but the flyer was gonna have that to the link.
Is the flyer in here?
Yeah. I mean, that's gonna just be general like.
Yeah.
You know, but not, yeah.
So theoretically, you can ask for anything.
Twenty inches.
You can ask twenty inches. We, we are gonna say, yeah, your name.
Right.
And so I, I think we don't wanna limit anybody to their imagination.
I understand that. I'm just curious if, if there was a place, okay. Thank you.
I, I, it, it, so it's not technically a new, uh, Donna?
It could be.
It, yeah, this is, this is for re, inactive customers, not new customers. This is for inactive customers. It says, in the first sentence, district records indicate your parcel formerly received irrigation water, but is no longer active. If interest in renewing service for the twenty twenty-four season. This completed application must be received at the district office no later than March first.
What funds are we trying to?
The new service goes through a different process. It goes through, they can get service, yeah, yeah.
So if somebody buys a piece of property that was before using irrigation water.
They have to read off the district.
And, and for some way, they still have, they have a mailing address. It's more or less the same and they get the notice.
Yeah, so if they, if that parcel had irrigation water at one time, does this go there?
Okay.
They hit this one or they hit the?
If they're, if they're not, if they're, if they're active, they get the other one. If they're inactive, they get the pink one. That's good.
And they, and if there is a property transfer with an active customer, it would be the white one. And now that would happen, that would happen at the property transfer.
Okay, that's what I would. Yeah, okay. Cause that's what I was. And down bottom. When you put, I would, I was having it as, as if there was somebody coming back and said, would you supply the irrigation? And said, do you supply an irrigation since they hadn't, or, um, a supply of pond?
Well, I think it's, properties can change, right?
Right, right, but I'm just saying if this is.
Sure.
They hadn't been doing anything.
Yeah.
They haven't been supplying a pond. So.
That's yours.
That's why I'm asking the question, would supply a pond with irrigation rather than do because they aren't? Why are you staring at me like that? You made a creep.
It's working.
Just, just take out the, no, don't, just take it, just change it to say irrigation water used, supplying a pond with irrigation water. What is, what are you doing? That, that's fine. Cause all it says, so just take the do you, say supplying a pond with irrigation water.
Okay, just so it doesn't say like you.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I mean, it's, it's, I think, I don't.
Yeah, you're on ten.
Yeah.
So are you like, you taking, I mean, when you get that information, what, what do you use it for?
What, we use it just to have for our records.
For your records. Cause on my place, I, I have a, I have a pond there that I have for winter time, so the cows has something to drink. And, uh, I fill it up the end of the season.
Yeah, so you, you supply a pond with irrigation water and you have livestock.
W- water goes down to it so that I don't lose it off the property.
Yeah.
So recycle.
And you could fill out more than one of these boxes. It's not, it's not like a multiple choice where you can only have one answer.
Okay.
But that's. All right. Moving to the next one. This is, uh, for those customers that are both treated. And irrigation raw water customers, and this is the letter you get to, uh, determine or to, to request a backflow on your property.
So can I ask irrigation customers, do you guys know what this means when it says in accordance with cross connection control regulations?
Oh, yeah.
You are, wait, you are required to have a backflow preventer tested annually by an American Waterworks Backflow Test Assembly Tester.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, who does, who is that? And what does that mean? That means you have to have this one setting to, to prevent backflow. So you prevent mixing of the two waters. And every year, which I think is silly, but every year.
Not our regulation.
You need to have it checked by somebody who's been approved by the state to do it.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not our regulation, that's the state's.
And that's why I was wondering if we put, I put, uh. Let me see, I got two different letters there. Anyway, but you put up at the beginning, uh, instead of in accordance with ordinance section. Ordinance twenty, twenty-three, that zero four section, whatever, that requires you to do it based on our ordinance.
Yeah, but it's based on state laws where we have, you do this.
Mm-hmm, but we're also basing it on our ordinance.
But the, the trump to our ordinance is state law.
I understand that.
That's cross control regulation.
I understand that.
We could say in accordance with state law.
Or, or California, you know, whatever it is. Um, because cross connection control regulation is kinda out there. It doesn't say it's state, it doesn't say it's ours, it doesn't say.
What, what if it said California?
Was just put in accordance with state of California, cross control regulation, you are required to have a backflow preventer. How'd that sound?
Or just for California.
Well.
Six one, state of California sounds better.
We'll be, we'll be really, we'll, we'll be really prudent proper. We'll put the state of California.
Yeah, I like the thing because, you know, when you guys have trouble with the water, I don't lose from the top of the hill all the way back.
As a check bill.
Yeah, as a check bill, so, you know? Cause just take all the water you'd lose going back through that meter.
I think what Donna and I are saying the same thing. It's the reference, the, the way that things are being referenced is they're, they're not. They're not clear as to what they are, you know? It's like, uh, in accordance with cross connection control regulations.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you, you need to put like the state of California.
Sorry.
Okay, and then maybe expand what it is rather than.
Good, good. So, so this is a, I, this is actually a revised letter. We actually did have, you know, federal state drinking water act in most eighty-six with the state of California, with cross connection control regulation. We did have that. I think the request was to make it simpler. That's why we, we took it off.
I think it's a good idea to have it there because.
The federal part you don't need to have on there.
Yeah.
And I, and I still don't believe that they can eat California because they're.
You know?
You're being told what to do, but you're telling the customer as per our ordinance.
If you say something like, and its customers must comply with.
State regulations.
And then whatever, state regulations.
Well, I think the ordinance references all that anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but since in the first paragraph, people don't think it's, he's like making the, making us pay all that money.
Well, my, my point is back to when the one originally made was back in that one square order. It says ordinance number such and such.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it doesn't say, you know, the irrigation ordinance, you know, I, I think that. I, I don't know how to explain without probably insulting some people, but.
Okay, they can tell you.
Dump it down.
There you go.
This is dumbed down. Greenwood, it's used to read. You should have listened to read.
In accordance with the federal state drinking water act in nineteen eighty-six and the state of California law with cross control regulations, you're required to have a backflow preventer tested annually by a certified backflow specialist. Under these regulations, the district has the primary responsibility protecting the pot, pot, potable water from backflow and cross connection of dangerous substance that would endanger public health or physically damage the public water system.
So that's, that's the legalese. We dumped it down to this.
But that was on a letter in the back of it, right? Or was that this one?
That was the same letter. This, this letter goes with application. This is what.
So help us to, to, to what we, I.
I, I think, can I see that? Pick out the feds.
We did. Well, that's the old one.
Yeah.
And the new, the new one is this one.
Stand there.
We did take that out.
Can I finish? You always cut me off.
Go ahead, Finn.
What was it?
Was it Linda?
Yeah, listen, Linda.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, I think, take out the, okay, look, you, did you just do that?
I just did that.
See, he's, he's got it. You gotta leave the state in there cause, cause, you know, like they said.
That's fine.
Take it back. Um. Yeah, I, I, I like this. I don't understand why. I mean, you got room to put it in there, but I'm going to throw another page.
But what do you, what room to put what in? I'm not missing.
We're not the state of California.
All we're gonna do is add it in the beginning sentence.
Right.
Yeah.
We agree. Yeah, we're, we're arguing about the same thing.
Then you go to back to closely because.
Understand, so I'll explain it to you.
So do we just add those words, the state of California after the word with?
I don't, I think there was more in there than that.
There was more, yeah. But i- if you look at, so we, then I know.
Let me look at this again, of course. So it's gonna say state of California.
In accordance with the state of California cross control regulations.
That tells, goes into a little bit about what a backflow preventer is, doesn't it?
But it also, if you look down, it also shows. Like there's facts. If you see at the bottom, it says a list of frequently asked questions can be found on the district website app.
So I think what we're, what we're trying to do, we revised two of them. So this is, the first letter is the annual certification letter. The second letter has the installation link. They don't have it. That actually has more detail of what a backflow is. Cause at this point, when they have, when they give renewal, you're. Again, is the assumption, may it's not a good assumption that he would assume, you know, they, they would understand.
Okay, but they're, and they're gonna get this on one that has more detail than a.
If they don't have a cross connection.
Yeah, they don't have.
And then we still provide the list of contractors, the ordinance, and links to the ordinance and a link to the frequently asked question. Well, I feel a lot dumber now, so. But we're not, they're perfect.
Okay, can we go to our?
Anything else?
I'd like comment on the second letter.
Uh, well, I have one on the second line.
The second letter?
The first letter.
He's staying on the first letter.
Okay, thank you. But you can tell me there. Um. If your backflow device has not been certified within twelve months from the start of the twenty twenty-four irrigation season, the, the device will need to be certified.
Yes.
You kind of have already said that, um, because you're saying if the backflow device has not been certified. That means you need to have it certified.
Yeah, no.
So what I wanted to end it with, uh, if you have not done it within the twelve months from the start of twenty twenty-four irrigation season. I kinda was wanting to get to cut the chase and you will not receive irrigation water for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I was told that verbally.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's correct, but I'm not sure what you wanna change.
I wanted to get rid of the device will need to be certified. I would say.
It does need, it will need to be certified. If it hasn't not been certified within twelve months, it will need to be certified.
It will need to be, or add in that you will not be.
Failure, cause then the next sentence says backflow certifications are required to be submitted to the district before May first of twenty twenty-four. Failure to do so will result in withholding of irrigation water.
Yeah, maybe that should come in the second paragraph.
That's what I was. Because you're talking.
We can just make it one paragraph. Just take it.
Okay.
Make the hard return out right here and just make backflow and put it right there. That, that work?
That work. And we also need to get cleared up with your values that they will hand us the certifications because they keep believing that they don't have to do that. And we have to go and call them separately.
Well, there, so the law is there. The customer drops your question, right? But the law is they have to, the tester has to submit the prepare. For our.
And you're telling, so they don't send us or give us.
They do not give, they, they're not required to give you unless you request it, yeah.
Right, you send it to you.
But you're requiring us to do it.
That's what they do.
You're requiring us to send it in.
No.
And I.
No, no, it's going to be sent, you give this information to your backflow tester to send it to us.
Yeah, if you don't send it to him, then you get on his butt.
But you don't know it's been turned in.
That, that's true.
That's the problem. I do not know he's turned it in. He's supposed to.
But is that our, is that, I'm, I'm gonna be the devil's advocate here. Is that the district's problem or is that the customer's problem? Because the customer. You should be working with their, their backflow person to ensure that it got submitted.
Well, you hire the guy, the guy comes out when you're not.
You, you, you're looking at this from a customer aspect right now.
That's right.
Don't look at it, you're, you're a board liaison right now.
No, 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 I am working on it. So, so Joe, anybody can look at this and understand what to do.
This is.
And get the information without any hassle with a minimal amount of, uh, vision. So that's.
I mean, if you wanna add a sentence, you could say, please have, uh, the cert, certificate sent to. Uh, the district via these communication methods.
But wait a minute, the district, the customer doesn't provide the certification.
Which on the other hand.
What we're trying to say, you give this information to the backflow tester to send it.
So you know that it's been done.
You don't know it's been sent to him.
But when you find a guy that lives in Sacramento, he doesn't know where to send it. You find some guy who's.
Sacramento doesn't have a drive, yeah.
Well.
But if the point, we don't know, once we handed them the credit card or whatever, cause they calling it's credit card. Did they send it to Adam? As it was, when I called, I didn't have mine sent in, cause he had not sent them in. He sent them in blocks.
So, so.
Well, when is it, how do I know it, it went in?
But you, you can call us and you're gonna, you can find out.
But it shouldn't be, I'm trying to make it user friendly for the customer.
But I, you have to take off your customer hat right now. You have to. Good luck with that. You, but you, you have to think of this as, we are, we are.
I'm here to represent my customers.
You are, you are representing the district in this, in this instance, and there's only so much that we can do as a district. I can't. I can't say this in open session. I'll talk to you afterwards because I can't, I, what I, what I'm gonna say is, is you can't. You can guide the horse to water.
Yeah, make them drink.
Oh, yeah, we have our ways.
Especially, very special like Terry Echols.
I, I think it's open discussion right now, so.
Has anybody read the contract to see what it states as far as where the certificate is supposed to be mailed?
So the, the, when you say contract with, with.
In other words, I'm the homeowner.
Yes.
I call, come certify my, uh, okay, and the payment's made. I sign the form.
Yep.
What does that form say?
Whatever you agree to with that backflow person.
That's.
That's what we can't get involved in that.
Cause what is to me, it's more user friendly if I don't have to mail it back.
And so all this is saying here is when you have a backflow guy, and I'm gonna use the bad example, you find some guy from Sacramento who's trying to make a name for himself out here. And he starts putting flyers, like, hey, you got a backflow that needs certified? Yeah, come on over, let's certify my backflow. You're gonna do it for fifty bucks? That's twenty-five bucks cheaper than the other guy. Come do it. And then he goes, where do I send this? Who are you getting this certified for? And you say, you can either send it to this address or you can send it to this email address.
Mm-hmm.
And theoretically, if they're emailing it, you can ask them for it to CC it and CC you so that you know when it got sent to us.
I didn't know that.
So, so.
That's not a district problem.
Then we can't, we can't put her, we can't put ourselves in the middle of that. We, we, we have no power.
Well, I guess what it was, if the, I, because this, you or the state, whoever, is requiring the certification to come from the district.
Yes.
That's where the, the problem is. It's great that you guys.
You're yelling at the district for something that's a state issue.
I, that's what I'm kind of asking. Is that a state requirement?
Yes.
That's that guy because he's certified through AWWA, that he has to send it to the district.
So what I would recommend is, this isn't even something that we can ask, is get your own copy. And if the district, he doesn't send it to the district, you can bring us a copy.
Oh, it's, it's an act of God, but anyway.
Well.
Okay.
So we have, uh, we, uh, Mr. Chairman, we have this out, and then we do have Ms. Cherie who's raised her hand.
Now, following on what Donna was saying, um, you guys are, actually you're involved because, you know, you're delivering the water, you're requiring that everybody gets this certification. Do you have people that you recommend? I mean, people call up you.
Write a list. We, we can't recommend.
I don't know who to go to, who do I go?
We will never, we, we, as a public agency, we are not allowed to recommend. What we can offer is a list of potential, uh, uh, uh.
Certified test.
There's a, there's a word. It's a, a preferred, preferred list. And so it's on our website.
With credentials.
That's not up to us.
So, cause it's gotta be shysters out there.
Well.
We do verify that list. They do have.
But they could also have their testing or license revoked for whatever reason. They don't renew. For whatever reason, they don't renew and and we can't go in and basically we we this isn't it's not you know, it's a list that evolves, obviously. But we are we don't like verify every year. Hey, did you have your license renewed? Did you have your license? Because again. That's outside of our purview. Our purview is if you have raw water and treated water, you need a backflow. It is your responsibility as a customer of those two services to certify, to install and certify this backflow. We can't be the middle person. We can't guide you through that process. That is something that you have to to do on your own. We can help you. We'll give you resources, but we can't ensure that it gets done.
You have to go and inspect after they get this all done. Just make sure it's done correctly.
I think we did with the backflow certification comes to us. I think that's enough. Well, I'll verify that.
In the district, you guys the service to the customer.
We do have a couple of backflow testers and we charge the same amount as we charge as a service. So we don't do it for free.
Okay.
And and we charge a hundred dollars to do it.
Hundred dollars.
But it's not. It's not really like we have a guy that is can come out instantaneously and do it. It's part of his other duties as assigned.
And there's no guarantee he's gonna send it in.
Listen, over there. At that point, I at that point, I'll get involved.
I I would think if something as important as this is is you put out, I have a a service that's conflict.
So we don't. So so I totally understand what you're saying. And Sherry, I do see you up there. We're getting to you in one moment. Um. I don't want to take away from local businesses. I I I I just don't feel like I want to be the guy. We could absolutely do it. We could hire somebody and that could be his job to go out and do backflows. Do I want to take Frank Smith plumber on the divide? Oh, his part of his livelihood away. I don't.
Okay.
And so that's that. That's my methodology.
Thanks.
If the board sees it otherwise, and the board wants to offer this as a service, because we already do offer it as a service, it's a hundred dollars. And I think the local guy charged is seventy five. So so we're we're not a convenience. We're we're a little bit less convenient, but we could probably do it. Uh, you know, get it done because we'll pay to just pop over there, go do this. I just don't want to take away from the guy.
Okay.
Uh, sure, uh, Mr. Yeah.
Well.
I'm not sure if Ray's hand is a hanger on from earlier. I don't.
Okay.
Not a hanger on from before.
I I never have. I agree with Donna that the customer doesn't know that you received that certification. And it's very similar to when I turn in the Lifeline um, program for the treated water. If I didn't hand it directly to Jessica, I would be wondering whether or not you received it if I mailed it in. So I think it would take less staff time if you just shot the customer an email or for if the if the contractor forwards. You know, send you an email, just forward it to the customer and say, we received it. It'll take more staff time to take phone calls or two to three months later, when the person doesn't get their uh, irrigation water or the treated water uh, discount. It's gonna be a mess. I think it'd be easier if you just did an email. You've got most everybody, I hope.
Yeah, but that's your. Go ahead.
Can I say something about it?
Okay, it's called.
A customer needs to at least put a little bit of effort in it. If you want a copy of it, just tell the person that you're having done. Email me a copy too. Let them use their staff time to send you the copy. And then that's that. And they send you a notice and they say that, you know, hey, you didn't get your certification in. Then you can forward in the email that you receive and be done.
We do. We do.
We do not know that our application has been approved.
Yeah, the same thing. Yeah.
We so that means we do not know that the certification, we could have it in our little hands. But we don't know the certification did go to them. I mean, I get a bill. I don't get a certification. I get a bill when I ask for it with some numbers, what I have asked them for numbers. I want the pressures to see that he actually tested it.
Yeah.
But um, we don't even know we get approved.
Don't you get noticed that you'd not approve?
I don't know.
Pass if your device passes. That's it. That's it for that part. It's approved at that.
Right. But I'm saying, I put my application in. Well, I'm just running the whole run. So I put my application in. You have it. The certification. Do I need to get you some more water?
No, I never. No.
Good. Anyway, so I put my certification. I I go and have my my backflow preventer certified. I do not know that A, it went in. Or B, if my application was approved for water.
So you could this is I I I appreciate what Ms. Cherie said, but it is. It is just as easy for the customer to call in and say. Hey, you have our backflow in and it's in the system. We have a little thing in our in our Tyler where we can say yay or nay. And if we say nay. Then you take it up with your backload person and you could call a couple of days, a couple of weeks before irrigation season starts. What does it take from a back for a sort of education to get to us? Two weeks?
It kind of depends. They they have a sixty day requirement. So they don't do it immediately. That's part of their license, so.
And then you can't get on to get uh, like if you don't call right away, you'll be you do. They do a January run. They do a February run. And it's like if you somehow miss that pivoting window. It doesn't go in. And that's what I found it when I talked to Adam. He said, oh, I haven't got your certification, but he hasn't sent anything in yet. I'm like.
Yeah, and so so that those are the types of things that are out of our hands. We can't control that. Maybe you're just saying.
We do follow up though. We if we don't have uh, within, if we don't see a backflow certification coming in, we do follow up with those customers and do like a lot of money. Note check. Hey, you know, you're you're still. We don't sign a full letter. We do a we do a email. We can put the listing up pretty quickly.
Yeah, I think I asked them for a copy of this form they're gonna send you guys. It's an awesome idea because if they don't send it to you and it gets down to the wire and and he calls and says, hey, I've had your certification. Yeah, but I got it done. And if I don't have a paper to show him. Now I gotta find the guy that did it.
We just added a single letter saying advisable to ask your provider to give you a copy of the document. For your record.
I feel like that's that's getting meddling in something. We should we should need to tell people that.
Well, then let's not even.
But I thought you need to go back Sacramento there an hour that way. That's the people you gotta talk to about not needing those, unfortunately, it's not us asking.
That's what I'm saying is we're going round and round and round about do we do loads of this? And it we're not getting forward a resolution.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, so I would need to back up the bus just a little bit. So the requirement, these are pretty much yes or no questions. I'm gonna wear a board hat, even though I'm not a board member, and I'm gonna wear a customer hat because I'm a customer. I understand wanting to reduce the workload at your facility. I get that. I also get your liability portion of it, but I also understand the customer portion. So who is making the requirement? And we're all talk all we're talking about is this page that we want to put some print on. That's really all we're talking about. So whose requirement? Who tells the tester that it is required that he report to G D P U D? Is that a state or a G D P U D requirement?
The state of California.
Okay. So at that point, you have to assume that every tester has the address for every water district that he might be testing for to know where to send that. In reality is, he does not.
Yeah, that's why we write the address.
Let me just let me finish. To reduce your liability and to put the onus on the customer. I think the wording should be it is the responsibility of the customer to secure their certification yearly and produce it to G D P U D. End of sentence. That's it. But it's that way, they're not wasting your clerk's time calling up. Go, did you get my certification? Did you get my certification? It's their responsibility to get the certification from the tester and then get it to G D P U D.
They cannot. They cannot give it to us. That's exactly what we're trying to say is the customer cannot hand it to us at G D P U D. It has to be transmitted directly from the backflow tester to the district.
Well, then you got a bigger problem than what I thought you had. Because you can't require the customer to do it because you've got people in an age group that probably don't even know how to do an email or do an attachment. So if they can't walk into your facility. If I can't walk into your facility and hand you a certified piece of paper, I I don't know what you can do then. So thank you for the time.
But it sounds like.
I'll, I mean.
Sounds like kind of a bad situation.
We can. Ms. Cherie, I think it still has a hand raised. I don't know if you have any more comment on this.
There's a our duty and that's well. Cherie? Oh, you do.
Well, I do I get to say something?
Please.
Um, I still think it's gonna take more staff time following up when you don't receive. I'm not talking just the certification, but application. It's gonna take more staff time on the phone and trying to reverse things and give people credit, start their irrigation, even the Lifeline uh, credit. It's gonna take more time than just for the uh, customer service to just send an email when they get it.
It was just. We was just stated that we do send an email before season if you have not had your your certification sent into the district.
Okay, so you do send something prior to not giving them irrigation.
That is what I just said. Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, Lifeline one still is is a problem too. And we're only talking three to four hundred people. It's not like you're doing four thousand customers. That's it.
Okay, and I have one more typo. The district has com- complied a contractor's list.
Oh, compiled. Sorry, yeah, I was missing an eye. D L, D I L. We've complied with the contract. Right.
Well, I I've lost track of where we are.
Any more consternation on the. For you.
That's that's not what I'm asking. What number are on our agenda?
We are still going through the forums, so there's still another forum.
Say every number is that.
Right.
One A.
Well, the next form is.
Way to go.
Um, what what refresh around what this one's.
Don't have a backflow.
Okay, so this is the letter you get if you don't have a backflow. And it tells you which backflows are approved or which ones are examples. Okay. Have you want to change this one?
I.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I I probably probably apologize.
Yeah, I'm getting used to it. Um. It's on purpose. In the uh, like second to last paragraph on the page, um, you kind of vary the list of the compiled list, although it's combined of the contractors. I just think that that paragraph should also be separate and not be a part of the proceeding.
Yeah, we guess she's saying right here. Just to make a hard return here.
Hmm.
And then it's it's spelled wrong, yeah.
And I'm curious, um, they do have uh, entities that you can get a shortened uh, URL address. Rather than having to claim, you know, type in zero two, is that a zero or capital Z O? That sort of thing. I mean, you can really get good.
Um.
Like bitly, there's there's entities that you can make a shortened address that people can type it in easier. For the written letter, they're not gonna be able to click on it.
That's a good point. We do get. We do email these out too.
Yeah, so the yeah, so I don't know if that service costs or that's I don't know.
Generally not.
Okay, I know. I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
We can look into it. That's. She's saying that there's a way to like link this to something that's much more manageable to type in in case people have to transpose this into their system.
Okay.
I don't. I have never heard of that. I'm about apparently I'm not that young anymore.
I told you that earlier. Hey. You didn't blame me, did you?
Yeah, my brain stopped working earlier, remember? That was. That was a clue. And and that just shows the picture. So besides the hard return and the spelling error, anybody else have any changes for that page? Okay, so the next one is.
Sorry.
So then the next one is the postcard flyers. Um, to show that there's still inches available. And it's a yeah. Is this you?
Yeah.
Yeah, our graphic artist over here. She's amazing. Um, so basically, I think it's one of them is just blown up. So it's a small one. It's gonna what the side it's gonna come out as. And then blown up.
Exactly.
That's that's the side you thought.
That is a. Postcard size.
It has really.
That is much crap. I'm sorry.
Yeah, this this is gonna need to be a big.
That's it right here.
It's gonna cost us more to set up bigger ones.
How much more is it cost?
QR code.
A thousand dollars probably.
They know those flyers are about. We either A L T.
On the next. Thirty so probably probably a third of that. I know it's sad. That's gonna be twenty five. Well, let's because I'm excited.
Uh, on the first first side of the card, the front of the card. The lower left hand corner, the phone number and the address. Could we increase that size?
Probably. We'll increase all of it.
After the whole thing, I would get rid of all the cuteness and blow that whole section up so somebody can read it.
So we like the cuteness.
I don't like. It's like it's like when you give out.
I like negative space.
No, it's it's beautiful. It is really pretty.
She worked very hard of us.
Problem is. It's pretty, but.
Yeah, we'll make we'll make the.
Yeah, you know.
Because it's like that one.
You're taking the picture off.
And even in here.
Well, now we know where the problems are coming from. What other people may want to read it?
Maybe.
That's a good question.
They do go together, people don't pay attention.
It's fine print. Tell them that. We're supposed to keep that one by the close of the box. They can't read it. They can't know about it.
Well, that's why you send out that card for
Make the font smaller.
All the smallness. Is your water clean or not?
Have somebody come to all the irrigation, pierce his door and talk really fast like the guy at the end of the commercial.
Yeah, you just keep on with the elder abuse here. Yeah.
Are you kidding me? I have worse eyes than anyone in this room and I.
Obviously not, because you can read that. I can't.
Really? No, I can't.
But you know, who's gonna do that?
I have my other twenty four hundred of my contacts.
I would say how much it costs.
Totally kids.
I would say, you know.
Sounds like a you problem.
No, it's our double case. We're going to be working for. I think we have a committee member.
We we if we adjust the size of the fonts. Are you okay with the content of the wording?
How do we know? I can't read it.
There's a blown up one. Look at the blown up one.
Okay.
I do. I think there's too much verbiage here on the backside. Okay. I think and I would like the evening to uh, reflect on it. But minor entries are available is fine. Irrigation ordinance twenty twenty three. Why is that on there?
To show where it is.
To show.
To show where to find the ordinance.
That is the ordinance number. But then just have the ordinance number on it.
No.
Well, but.
We already had that conversation.
But what is.
We're we're.
Then we get to this paragraph.
Be here all night.
Wait, why do we have rules and regulations after ordinance twenty twenty three?
Because that's the title of it. It's the irrigation.
Yeah.
It's rules and regulations. Because that's the title of it, it's the irrigation, it's rules and regulations.
That's the whole title of the ordinance that we put out. And you have to work to your customer base.
We can just say, um, please refer to irrigation ordinance, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, but that's also, like, gonna cost us like ten dollars to send that out. So what did you want to add this time?
The ti- paragraph titled Irrigation Committee. Okay, just say the committee currently has. An opening. Interested irrigation customers are welcome to apply. It's that one sentence, appropriate PICA. Size. PICA is an old printing term, my husband used to do printing.
I like to go as PICA as people eating crock.
Well, and red dirt, yeah.
People eat chockeys because they have PICA, because they have like some mineral deficiencies.
Why is it the only one, only one that knows about that?
I'm not that old, I know about that.
I never heard of it either.
Because we have feedback that people in the community didn't know there was a venue, so I don't know if you.
Just, just, just say irrigation committee, come join us.
Like, so, so if, so Thonro was saying in his conversations that often people didn't realize there was an irrigation committee.
I would just say irrigation, the irrigation committee meets monthly during the season throughout the year. The public isn't, is welcome to attend, the customers, the public, it has to be the public. You don't need to say anything about the committee, sort of the direct line.
But it serves as a direct line.
Currently has an opening, I would say, anyone interested in joining the irrigation committee, please email you. By, there's a reason why, I don't need my address out there for.
Yeah.
I don't want it to be floating around.
Fox do like that.
Why do you have to have it, uh, irrigation?
It doesn't say irrigation customers only.
Because it's a irrigation.
Yeah.
Irrigation committee.
Committee by irrigation customer.
Because technically, if to be on the irrigation committee, you're supposed to be an irrigation customer.
Yeah, but you can probably get more bites.
So we don't want to pack the committee with non-irrigation customers, and then they start making recommendations to the board to cancel the irrigation service.
Yeah. Yeah. That's, that's what it was four years ago, if I remember.
Yeah, so when the ordinance, when the, not the ordinance, when the um. The policy to establish the committee was passed, that's what it said, uh, Mr. Chairman, you do have a, oh, Mr. Ray Paul, do you have a comment?
I did not.
Thank you. So, yeah, we, we can tighten up this and, and make it less onerous, less words, make them bigger.
Oh, yeah, you're really convincing, just say, instead of complaining on Facebook, go to the committee meetings.
I'm gonna say, instead of complaining on Facebook, go to Mike's house located at.
That's what I do. I keep telling them, go to the committee meetings.
I have a comment, um, I see that it says twenty twenty-four irrigation season, and you guys talk about costs on the front. Um, and you guys talk about costs, I'm wondering what the costs are to have this printed up, or if you can print it in-house.
Yeah, I would say that we should probably change that.
Just say, this year's irrigation season is coming up.
Say, just.
More and use them.
Irrigation season, I agree.
If we do, it's been a lot that's, per area, that could change year to year.
Yeah, we're gonna target mail these. We're not gonna mail these to the whole district, are we?
Just irrigation, kind of is all here.
No.
No, because if you read the second, the line, it says. There are available inches in your area, so if we have an area that doesn't have inches, and we send this there, then we're in trouble.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think we just wanna take the dates and make it generic. Because we can send, we'll, we'll send these out in-house, we're not gonna have a, like a printer send these out, we'll address the print labels and send them on ourselves. So it makes sense. Yeah. You're looking at me like I don't really wanna do all that.
And we have, we have mailed them.
I think having three hundred people to.
That's actually, yeah, you're right, actually, the one that we have had, has had more.
And it's going to be less, because we're gonna target mail. We can, because we can pull in water smart, we can pull addresses and.
Sort it and get it quickly, you know.
I think it's better to do it that way, because it's gonna be cheaper for the district anyway, because we could print like, like five hundred of these. Bigger. I'm gonna just try to send your board package to your.
Something you read, Mike.
Of course, I have a fork, actually. Good, with the Flint stove, you're gonna like put it on tablets.
Well, I'm thinking about the board package, they're like eight hundred pages long, you know, I mean, that's gonna waste some courage.
We will, we will make the font bigger, we will still leave it on the smaller paper, but we will. We will have less negative space, and I'm sorry. She had worked really hard on this, she was very proud of it.
See, here's, here's the thing, Liz, you see, I want, I want it to be displayed better. See, I want more people to see it easier, it's so beautiful.
Wow. Okay, so with the changes. Uh, this is an action item, and what we can do is pass this on to the board for adoption of these changes, so. Um, we did discuss a few changes. I hope you can trust us as staff that we capture those, those changes, and we will incorporate them before they go to board. Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you, uh, and your, and the rest of the committee members, um, like to approve these to move out of the board? Or how, how would you like to handle that?
Fine with me. Someone would like, if we wanted to submit this to the board. Uh, we need someone to make a motion to do so.
I'm making motion.
It's moved and seconded to submit irrigation committee. And others' comments to the board, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving along, agenda. No, irrigation committee member comments and reports. Anybody? Hearing none, moving along to item eight, agenda items for the next irrigation committee meeting.
So we don't typically meet in January, but we do have the meeting on here, we are welcome to meet. Um, we'll come back in February and meet again in February.
What date, February?
So it'll be the second Tuesday of February, so, but uh, if you guys all would like to cancel the next meeting, it's up to you. Um, again, we typically have not met in January.
Yeah, I think that would be fine, the movie, we skip January, skip January, okay. Moved in second to just skip our uh, January meeting. What is the date on the second Tuesday?
Looks like the thirteenth.
Of January?
Yeah.
February.
January the thirteenth.
Correct. It'll be, yeah, and so just to note for the committee, uh, board did uh, adopt. At the last meeting, an adjustment to the dates, so it is now the Tuesday, instead of the third Thursday, it's now the second Tuesday. And it helps uh, with board flow, workflow, and we did see a lot more uh, representation from the committee, so that's, that was the reason.
Okay, um, is, do any, do any members have agenda items for the next irrigation committee meeting? Hearing none, um.
We need to see any of their information that they're putting out for the. Uh, advertisement of irrigation season, how-to videos, et cetera, et cetera.
I don't know.
If you'd like to see the videos, we could show them at the February meeting.
That would be great.
I would be interested in that.
What is your fine change for sending out the letters asking for the much first?
I think they go out right before Christmas, so they should be going out like. We're, we're, we're gonna update these at the next board meeting, which is Tuesday, and they're gonna basically go out right after that. That's what we, that was why we did this meeting, because of having all the timeline, is to keep them the normal timeline.
Well, you're not gonna have any responses, any indications as of February for that, because it's not due till March.
We, you mean like, as in people sending them back, some people do, but.
Well, how about an update on what we've got, gotten back? For the agenda.
We will, we will do the best we can, and it may be, uh, maybe real time, if you email us the day before and just say, hey, have you got any? Then we could bring that.
Okay.
Yes.
Will that date in February, will that conflict with the new date of the board meetings?
No, the board meeting is the first Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
So it's Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday, that's why we, we did it, we did it. It's like fourth Thursday.
Okay, with that, uh, next meeting date, we already, it's, it's second.
Yeah, second Tuesday, February.
February, which I don't know what. That, let's adjourn.
We'll get the motion, so.
A motion to, to, to adjourn.
Yeah, I'm, I still move.
Also, I can move in second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, let's adjourn.